Yeah.
Yeah, he said he could just.
Ready?
Alright. Okay, testing one two. Mr. Ricks, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Alright. Are we ready, everybody? Oh, awesome. Alright. Call this meeting to order at six thirty-four P M. October twentieth, twenty-two thousand twenty-one. Rise, our pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a roll call?
Roll call?
Alphabet order, yes.
Danielle Fones, here. Paul Ricks?
Uh, here electronically in southeast corner of New Mexico.
Waze? I mean, Smith?
Absent with nose.
Waze?
Here.
And under.
Here. Uh, I believe that brings us to three dot O. Uh, modification approval agenda. Like to make a motion to add nine dot leather twice Pete Boses' contract. Go second.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Do you have any other motions to modify the agenda? Alright, call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Fones, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
And then Swayze?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I, I guess I should mention, so because Mr. Smith was absent, or is absent, and I'm asking, Mrs. Cullen for the first time ever to attempt to tackle the duties of the secretary during our, um, meeting. Alright, so that brings us to four dot O consent agenda. Mr. Liver, sir, you want to talk about park board sponsors? Um, if you would turn microphone on. There's a button there somewhere.
Hello, there you go. Okay, I think we're on now.
Okay.
I think we've left on. Um, I'm choosing this forum as park board member, uh, because I do have all the kids in the room that need to be there. We have the, the bike races that we do. It's the park board hosts the bike racers and they actually have a big organization that they've addressed to us that they would be willing to sponsor uh, some sporting events or sports teams. Um, so they're talking about pretty big money. So they're talking about uniforms maybe or, or equipment. Um, they got some big sponsors. So what they're asking for is some letters. I know the park board were putting together a letter, uh, just a history of the park board, uh, it's five oh one C three, blah, 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 and we're getting submitted to them. They're also asking one for the school. So if I would be willing to maybe help spearhead it, if we could get the board and the superintendent, a joint letter, some say, and what kind of a school we are, uh, what areas, maybe go with the A D, see what we can do, uh, and, and give them some ideas of what we, we could use for their sponsorship. Um, and then, and then hopefully what I'd really like to do is if we can continue with this and every year have this sponsor. You know, I don't know, add them to our, our jerseys or something.
Put a banner in the gym.
Every year that this organization will come through and help sponsor our kids. Of course. So that's what I'm proposing.
Okay. So here's what we're gonna do. Um, unless there are any objections, I think we're gonna ask the super, the superintendent spearhead this and probably gonna give him some advice, not that he has followed since we didn't vote on, but you know, we do have this grant writing committee and they've been basically putting together what essentially is what the kind of thing that you're talking about. And, um, and you know, going out to the Walmarts and the Best Buys and the Staples and trying to get donations from that perspective. So I think, you know, we've tag team it, um, that they give.
No, no, it, it sounds like these guys who, they brought it up. They were like, hey, we want to sponsor.
Okay.
So it's, I, it, I don't think there's a timeline on it.
And.
The sooner the better.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to have something ready for next board meeting.
We establish this communication, we establish this relationship and hopefully have it every year in the future.
Would the board like, uh, approval on the letter?
No, yeah.
No. Why, I mean, would we have that especially for the letter?
No, we do it at the next regular.
Yeah, we can do it at the next regular.
Okay.
But you, you guys would like to read it, see it, approve it, put the endorsement?
Yeah. I, I don't know.
I just don't want to hold it up.
I'm, I'm torn. If don't, that's what I'm hoping to do. And we did say, um, you know, last month or the month before, that, hey, you grant writing committee, go out and do great things. And the only thing that we're gonna stick our nose in is if we need to account for it under a special, you know, fund. So now I'm kinda sorta wanna go the opposite way with it. Um, but I don't know.
I'd like to see a copy like named with C C, but I don't think.
How about that?
I don't think that we need to vote on it.
Well, but that's just it. So TJ suggested that I have my signature or our signatures.
Well, well, that's no problem. I haven't seen it wrong, the signature.
I don't sign anything for that vote.
But they might like it.
Sorry, I came to.
You do, and then you bring it to us, remember in the last.
Thank you.
If it, if it's time urgent, then you sign off and then you'll bring it to us as a, hey, this is what I did.
Okay, yeah.
And this is what?
Hold on a second.
It's already, it's already been discussed.
Okay, there it is.
But you always discuss it. We all know about it in advance. That's what we do behind.
I just. Let's do that. Copy us on it. It's ready to go to print. And then we'll figure out what we're gonna do.
You, you know what? If they're really gonna sponsor us good, I would suggest maybe.
I mean, this, I, we're talking six figures.
I have no idea.
Free money.
But if you know these guys that ride these bikes and, and you know these bikes. Some of them are like ten grand, fifteen grand.
Right, yeah.
Oh, no, yeah. But if they do something like that, we might wanna think about, um, maybe
right.
Putting it on side of our bus that goes touring up and down the states and.
I, I do have a question.
Especially shared, go ahead, Mr. Ricks.
Is, is this the same group that does ride their bikes down Hanover Road? Because I know that some of the interactions that that group has had has not been very pleasant with some of our community. I don't know if it's the same group riding the bicycles.
They, they all belong to, uh, the bike clubs. Okay, so they, yes, chances are they are part of that same group. Um, they had their last race over here where they used the park, uh, and they loved it. And they donated, I, I think it was a few hundred dollars in that donation box.
Nice.
I mean, they're, they're really wanting to come out and do this.
And.
Uh, so yes, they're having, uh, some reactions, different reactions from the community, but they still love it.
Yeah, and they like to come out on Sundays when the fire department has their breakfast.
Oh, yes.
They line up out there.
Yeah. Okay, cool.
Maybe they know that it's a sort of an inconvenience, so this is their way of saying, hey, thank you. You know, like, I know it's a pain and we're out here. So I mean, this could be a way of thank you and trying to bridge maybe some of that gap between the group and the, the community. Thank you. I appreciate it. I look forward to it.
We'll definitely move forward with that.
You got it.
Alright, that brings us to five dot O consent agenda. Go motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Second, thank you, Mr. Swayze. Call for the vote, please.
Fones, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Waze?
Aye.
Under.
Aye. Motion carries consent agenda is approved. Brings us to board member comments. Um, Mr. Ricks, why don't you go first?
Yeah, I just, uh, want to encourage everybody in the community that may be participating or watching on YouTube to, uh, use your right to vote. Um, it's a critical time. And we had a, uh, very interactive meeting candidates. Uh, we have two open spots. If you have any questions on that, you can look it up and watch it on YouTube. Yeah, please get out to vote. Uh, that's the biggest way we can have our voice heard. So just wanna, that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Mr. Swayze? No, okay. Alright, Mrs. Cullen?
I just wanna say everyone who submitted, thank you to everyone who has submitted questions and viewed and interacted towards the end of the candidate night. That is important. We do have two open positions. Um, as always, it's nice to see people supporting the sports. I feel like these last few home games, we've had more in the stands, more cheering. I know the girls have noticed that as well. Um, just thank you for showing up. Thank you for being a part of the community. And to the teachers and staff, thanks for showing up every day. As always, uh, we wouldn't be able to do it without you. Um, parents, uh, thank you for entrusting us with your kids and let's just keep the ball rolling here. I'm glad to see that we're still in person learning, knock on wood. Um, so I'm just happy to see how this year has been unfolded. It's been getting great feedback on the staff and on the administration. So thank you for that. As always, it's nice to hear and, um, just let's keep supporting our students. Thank you all around and, uh, happy that.
Um. Yeah, um. You know what I was gonna, what I was gonna say, I probably shouldn't say. Might cross the line of politics. I'm not go there, but yes, uh, I'm gonna reiterate Mr. Ricks' comments. Um, you know, the right to vote, sacred responsibility being a citizen in this country, please vote. I don't care who you vote for. I don't want your, I don't care what your meaning is. I don't care. I don't care. I just want you to vote. I say it every two years, don't I?
All done.
Yeah. Alright, that's all I have.
I left mine blank, so you could have the time for that.
Mr. Superintendent, sir?
Well, um, we are, uh, off to a great start, just finished the first quarter. Uh, we had a homecoming, which was a great time. We had the parade. It was, uh, it was a blast. Uh, we had a talent show, which was also, uh, quite a bit of fun.
Where you can sing.
I don't know. I, 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 I can, I.
My daughter was blown away by this. She said.
Now I have to go watch it.
Yes, she told me while we were singing, oh, if I didn't know it was him, this song would be on my playlist. And it was a song he wrote. So sorry to interrupt.
No, I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, but I wasn't the only one. We, we had several staff members, a bunch of talented kids. It was, it was, it was a great night. I encourage, we're gonna probably do another one in the spring. It's the hope. Please come out, support your kids, see them, make fun of your staff. It's always appreciated. Um, looks like, uh, fingers crossed, we are looking at playoffs for football. Not to jinx any, well, but as of right now, it looks like, looks like we're gonna be there. We got, we got a great team. We got, we got some fast kids. Uh, we were awarded two more preschool slots today, so thank you very much, Ms. Jody, for going and grabbing those. She's also trying to switch these over from gifts to permanent slots. So we're hoping we're able to get those. Uh, conferences were held last week. We're looking for any, um, advice on how to make those more efficient, more meaningful for parents. So if you have any, I've, I've received some feedback. We're, we're always open to feedback on improving or things that we can do. Um, I don't know how many people have been waiting for this, but it looks like November fifth will be the day you can get your age five to eleven kids vaccinated if you so wish. Two doses, twenty-one days apart. That's what we're hearing. Uh, met with the, uh, met with the governor's office. Uh, they, they are looking to, they, they are the ones that gave us this date. So I know, I know that the CDC, the F, uh, uh, the FDA, we, they haven't approved this yet, but they're apparently confident enough to issue a November fifth date. Um, we're gonna be heading to Kit Carson for their S cap review on November seventh through the ninth. Uh, that got bumped from October. They had to go remote, so that got pushed, I know would, we still are not. Boses has a board of directors meeting on Thursday, the twenty eighth. That's next Thursday. Are, are we going? Mr. Swayze?
Mr. Swayze is officially the board's current representative, so.
Till November.
Are, are, are we, are we actually, are we going? Actually, let's wait till eight dot one, till you make that statement.
Yeah.
Alright, I will R S V P for both of us again.
Okay.
Um, so far, I will. So far, no outbreaks, no mask or vaccine mandates. Um, and, and I encourage you guys to go back and read my letter if you haven't, but look, we're one team, one Hanover. I wanna make sure that our, our families know that as, as the superintendent, we're not here listening to the powers that be outside this district. We are listening to you. We're listening to this board. Hanover makes Hanover decisions. And as long as I'm here, Hanover will make Hanover decisions. Um, with input from all of our people here. So again, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna ask you guys this again. Please drop by my office. I'll brew up a pot of coffee. We'll have a chat anytime I wanna hear from you. And that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for superintendent?
Miss Goggins, you are.
Well, with the DAC report. She sounded a little bit more like. Price is right.
Come on down.
Sounds like it's on.
I'm gonna be a little cumbersome because apparently my tablet died on the way here. So as far as new business is concerned, we would like to invite one of the board members to come into our meeting in November. Um, the purpose of this is to discuss the C R S, the goals and responsibilities of the DAC and how we can help support the board as well as support the community. Um, we'll let the board decide who's gonna come. The idea is that it'll be. I, yeah, I'll leave it up to the board.
Really?
I have a request on who it is. The idea, nope. The idea is that we'll have it be the first item on the agenda, so then the board member, whoever it happens to be, can send it off and go and do the rest and try the rest of the evening. Um, along with that, uh, we were supposed to go over the accountability committee timelines as it's supported by the Colorado Department of Education. Uh, we tabled that until November, until after we had talked to the school board members as well. Uh, we are working on filling two open parent seats and there are two applications that I believe, uh, we have three? Aha, yay, we have three now. Um, well, at the time of the meeting, there was only two that had applied, but I didn't know that there are three. Um, guys have that later on in your agenda. We did discuss the S cap goals that were put out. Uh, particularly, we're discussing the establishing and creating a positive culture district wide. Couple of things that came up as part of that, uh, were cross district events. So it's great to hear that the Halloween parade is happening. Thanksgiving lunch, I saw the announcement for that just came out. That's great. Um, Christmas on the Prairie, I believe, is coming up and will be announced. Um, some additional things that we had discussed were possible movie or a drive-in style movie night. Um, one of our potential new members, Alicia, is gonna take point on that and we'll discuss more in November. Um, that was one of the ideas that was thrown out to be district wide. Um, a community dinner slash dance, uh, for all of the community after the new year was also an activity that was brought up. Um, we are open to more ideas. The idea is that we want to have more events for the district itself and not separate schools. Um, P H E updates, a lot of great things are happening. Um, we already talked about the parent teacher conferences, uh, the Friday before on the eighth, the fire department came out and gave out goodies and did different demos. Sounds like the kids had a lot of fun watching the races of trying to get the uniforms on. Uh, there are five donated bikes. Well, festival is happening on ten twenty-nine. We are still looking for volunteers either to bring a vehicle for trunk retreat or to participate in the chili cook-off. Uh, the pumpkin patch. Uh, they went on pumpkin patch field trips and there were free pumpkins. It sounds like all of the students love that. I know my kids in particular were static to go on that field trip. The student council has started up. Junior high, high school updates, um, also parent teacher conferences, the eighth grade, uh, P B L project, the amazing race challenge. So the seniors with selected staff, uh, participated in different race activities and it sounds like that was a lot of fun. Um, with that, the future day was pushed back until today, ten twenty. Um, that was the P sat practice and Naviance, Naviance?
Naviance.
Naviance, there we go. Other business, uh, we did change our meeting time instead of the Thursday before the board meeting to the Tuesday before, so eight days before. That just gives us as a DAC time to summarize everything and get it into the board packet. Um, before it was less than twenty-four hours, that was just a little tight.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. New applications, um, you guys have those in your packet as well as I saw that the new application is also in there for review. Um, P H E has requested volunteers to help pack the backpacks for the kids on Friday mornings. Um, if you don't know what that is or are interested in volunteering, please get ahold of Ms. Michelle. And we will be transitioning the new chair and co-chair after the November meeting. Um, with the board meeting and accepting applications, we just wanted to give you guys plenty of time to review those before we selected a chair and a chair. Uh, so unfortunately, you will see me again in November, but probably not in.
So, um, let's talk some mechanics here real quick. So if you notice the action section, so um, we, we have a new DAC membership application form, A D. And in that, it says, um, I don't know if you read the packet, it says that, um, you have to pass a background check.
Yep.
Okay.
We discussed that at the meeting.
And, um, I think, and I, you know, we, we arranged them in this order on, on, on the agenda on purpose. So we, we, the volunteer handbook that says volunteers have to do background checks. In the DAC application that says, um, you have to have a background check in accordance with volunteer handbook and then the DAC membership. So then the question is, how are we gonna do this? Cause they already filled out applications. So do we want them to fill out the new application or do we wanna just take their applications and have them go get a background check? Yes. That's.
And that was one of the questions that we had and why we were waiting until after November to switch over the chairs and co-chairs. Um, if background checks, fingerprints and all that are needed, obviously gonna take a little bit more time. Um, and the question did come up, uh, if there is a cost associated with that, so is it up to the volunteer to cover that or how, how does the board want that work?
Um, it, it's within my purview and, and my, my, uh, feeling on this is this. They go and they pay for their background check. They come to us, we'll, we'll tell them where to go, what codes they need to give us. They pay for it. Comes back clean, we'll refund that money.
Uh, there's one more. When they actually volunteer.
Well, I, I was talking about the DAC.
Yeah, yeah.
My assumption is, but yeah, my, I'm not, my expectation is that they're gonna do at least volunteer for something and then of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And that was a it took a while for us to figure out.
Yes.
What we figured out. So we're not gonna have them refill up a new application. Uh, but we, we are, we are gonna ask them to go get a background.
Would you like the current DAC members to also go through that background check since we will be associating with the different school of students of?
I personally think that's wise.
Okay.
Okay. Or we can, we can. But I prefer one new standard for everybody, right?
Yeah, I make them all good, no?
Yeah. Okay.
I do, of course.
Sir?
Not about that. You said you're gonna have dinners and dances. How are you gonna work that? Which school? Where?
And that's what we still need to figure out. It was just one of the ideas that we threw out. Um, it would probably be later in the school year so that we have time to coordinate and figure out what's gonna happen with that.
There's a nice stage for a live band and almost a dance pit over here.
Yeah, and that was thrown out as far as the movie night, drive-in movie theater, we were thinking of doing that over here just cause there's more space than what there is at elementary school. Um, we would, as a DAC, like to have events at both schools to give the opportunity across the districts.
Well, I was getting ready to say, that's a good idea, to, to drag some of them from that side of the highway over here. Give them incentive if they don't like coming this way.
Drag them please.
Well, it does, but not as bad.
Yeah.
I've been in a lot of sporting events and, uh, no. Give them incentive, don't just, you know, right, find a reason, find a way to drag them.
Yeah.
Draw them all in, all of them, everyone living over here.
Yep, and that is the intention of being able to have things across the way, so it's not just one.
You have to get up and sing and dance to it.
So then the only other question I have is, uh, not really a good question. Um, like, we did not get your DAC report in writing for tonight.
That would be my fault then.
That's fine. I just.
Yep.
Um, you know, especially since you're moving them, needing a couple days sooner. Um, I would, I, I, you know, I would prefer to have it in the packet, so when, when we.
We do the packet Friday, six thirty, Friday.
So if you have your meeting the Tuesday, um, before that, Friday, that'll be four days.
Yep, yeah, that's the new intention. Just slipped my mind.
Thank you.
That's fine. I just.
Thank you.
But going forward, that's not gonna happen. Alright.
Very important.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot. That was a really good report. Um, that brings us to eight dot one election timeline. So and this is where I hate first of all. So according to the election timeline, election day's on the second, our regular board meetings on the seventeen. But the survey returns and election certification is not gonna happen until the twenty-fourth. Um, we have to give the newly elected members their oath of office by December third, and we have to have our organizational meeting by December ninth. So I'm thinking that we kinda sorta all agree, we don't have to agree, I can just call it. Um, but, um, heads up, I'm thinking there's gonna be a special on December first. Cause by then, the election will be certified and we can do the oath of office and organizational meeting in one time. Won't be missing board meetings, you know, sometimes we do that flip lot. So yes, you will have to go to the November Boses' meeting. And then we'll, if you get reelected, then we'll make your Boses' rep again.
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Alright, so that, that was just a heads up. I'm probably gonna call a special.
I wouldn't mind going in December cause they got a fantastic dinner down there. But that's, no, that's a good draw for the, for anybody else, right?
Alright, so that brings us, so that was just a heads up. Um, so eight dot two. Um, so the CASB came out with special policy update, lots and lots of stuff in there. Um, most of it's just legal language, uh, and there's a lot of um, you, I mean, we all know we can't do this, uh, but Boses something or CASB something, right? Um, a lot of stuff about anti, uh, discrimination language or.
For gender.
Gender, um, pronoun.
That was a new law that was passed in the last legislative session. Yeah.
And so a lot of that stuff is, is that, most of that stuff is that. Um, there's some other um, stuff about employee contact with students.
Again, another law that was passed. Um, they wanted to clarify uh, that, uh, the district is now liable to report back to C B E if someone is found or.
Having inappropriate.
Have an, and, and they wanted to make it clear that inappropriate contact extended to eighteen and older rap, students as well.
Yeah, student is a student. Um, those are the vast majority of the changes. Um, we have done no other customization. These are all district CASB changes. Um, so does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns about any of those? Alright, we all, uh, so unless there are objections, we're gonna move forward to the second reading. Okay. Okay. So I don't know how to tell a story. It's a long story. So a long time ago, when the earth was green, there were graduation apartments. Not so long ago, but. Six, six, six to eight years. State came out and said, oh, new graduation department. So CASB came out and they made a new. Policy and they said, you guys get to pick which year it's affected. It's a choice of two years. We picked one as a board and then um there was a miscommunication and one thing led to another and we ended up. Having to pick the second year, which, if you remember, caused a little bit of consternation. And um anyway, so now, uh now that every student who currently enrolled. Is under the new graduation requirements, CASB has seen a bit to get rid of the original I K F. Take I K F two and basically rename it to I T A. So now there's only one graduation department's policy. And everybody currently enrolled is covered. And they actually did some. A little bit of restructuring. So they took some of the stuff out of the main policy and put it in an exhibit.
They did. I I I.
We're keeping it consolidated.
I I requested that we get rid of the exhibit. An exhibit is something that you change when you think you're just going to be changing things, but a graduation policy, graduation guidelines are. That that's kind of a, a in stone thing. An exhibit can be changed in one read.
Right.
You shouldn't want to, if you're gonna change graduation requirements, you should wanna. Read that twice, you're gonna wanna, that's my personal opinion. So I left it in the board policy. These are the handover graduation requirements.
So we're not adopting. The changes to I K F E or the adoption of I K.
Because E is included in I K.
Right, right. So if you're ever looking at the CASB website and you.
Oh, there's an I K F E, why don't we have one?
That's why. And that's gonna be documented in a little spreadsheet where we have all of the stuff about all the policies. You know, because this is not the only exhibit that CASB hasn't known.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Koeman for working with me on making sure that we had this. I started teach props and then it was like a solid graduation.
Okay, so without further objection or with with, unless there is objections, we'll bring forward the second reading next one. All right, brings us to nine dot one, policy C C A or chart of a motion to approve nine dot one.
Make motion, prove that.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze, do you have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Um discussion. Right, I mean, we talked about it last month, little tweak, name changes. Any questions? Mr. Ricks, you good? Yeah, he's on. All right, call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Aye, motion carries, policy C C A is approved. Brings us to two, I C, I C A, second read, double motion to approve nine dot two. This is Combs, the second, Mr. Swayze. Um this is the one about contact minutes, hours, seconds, milliseconds.
With the passing.
Nanoseconds, right. Where we, we made a little, any questions, comments on this one? All right, call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Carries, I C, I C A is approved. Brings us to nine dot three, policy update reviews, double motion improvement at three. Thank you, Mr. Swayze, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rex. Um so along the lines of the um of eight dot two. So if there were, uh oh no, I'm sorry, these are the. Uh Mrs. Assistant, is this the fifteen?
Just the reviews, yeah.
Yeah, so this is our standard fifteen month reviews.
And I think, is this it? Do we have more?
I think there's one more.
We have um.
One more?
One more, I think, fifteen more to review.
And it will be hundred percent called up.
For this year.
For this, yes. All right, any, these, these are reviews, there's no changes, so assuming no one has any questions. All right, call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Got it, motion carries, the reviews are approved. All right, this brings us to nine dot four, I J O C R volunteer handbook. Double motion approved nine dot four.
Make motion, boot nine dot four.
Mr. Swayze, do you have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Okay, so there's a little bit of story that, when I first got in the district, there was a volunteer. And somehow, um some way. I can't recall, maybe in the great policy review twenty eighteen, for all I can remember. Um it went away. And we, clearly, I mean, it's like a twelve-page document with all good kind of rules for volunteers. Background check requirements and.
Philosophy.
And philosophy, yeah, yeah. And some, a little bit of motivational thing, you know, and you know, student, students, um. You know, like that one page, it's students basically mirror what they see, you know, that that was. You know, every once in a while, you need to be reminded of that if you're not in education, you know?
Or if you are.
Well, you probably get reminded of it a lot in education, come up with sources of and reading the volunteer handbook, but so. Once it was discovered that we didn't have a volunteer handbook, other board assistant, board assistant. Scoured the archives, found the old one, made some updates. And then we um. Uh brought it forward. So since it's a regulation, I don't need requires a review. So are there any, oh, are there any questions, comments, concerns or discussion about volunteer handbook?
No, I'm glad we brought it back. Why we lost it?
I wish I could explain where it went. Mr. Ricks? Okay, you good, Mrs. Swayze?
I'm good.
All right, call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Got it, motion carries, I call it, I jocker, is approved. Um all right, that brings us to nine dot five, approve the uh new DAC application. Double motion approved nine dot five. Thank you, Mr. Swayze, I'll take your uh view as the second, Mr. Ricks, thank you. So this is the actual changing of the form. Um so you can see now personal information, positions, that you qualified for a position that you want. Right, um because, you know, we may have needs, right?
Yep.
Chelsea, we may have needs to fill a position um that you don't necessarily want, but you can still be on the DAC. And then list of all your students and then just some generic background stuff and then your agreement. Of having to follow the new volunteer handbook. So, pretty simple. Any questions, comments, concerns, discussion on the new DAC application? All right, call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Meaning a new DAC application is approved as exhibit A E dash E. Um all right, so now that brings us to nine dot six, uh DAC member applications, double motion approved nine dot six.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs, that's a second. Okay, thank you, Mr. Swayze.
Second.
So these are three parents that have volunteered to be on the DAC. I don't, I don't know who did the marketing, but thank you. It was very uh successful. I believe it was by Chelsea, right? Went out and beat the bushes and.
Uh superintendent, board assistant.
I did hear Mr. Koeman at the volleyball games trying to, trying to get volunteers.
Awesome.
He was a team.
Yeah, so you guys did great, three parents in one D, I mean, that's, that's really awesome.
Had any of them done the best possible?
No.
So we have, vote yes on the rest of the lots.
Pending background check.
Okay. And not only background check, but fingerprints as well.
Yeah, this, we're gonna, you get the.
We're gonna do the fingerprint.
You get the whole kit kaboom.
Yep.
All right. You're gonna get the whole kit kaboom. All right, any questions, comments, concerns, discussions, other than thank you for the team effort of recruiting three parents to the DAC?
And thank you to the parents for putting their.
Yeah, that I forgot that. Thank you.
Wanting to step up and be a part of the DAC, so thank you.
All right, um anything else, anyone? Call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Got it, motion carries, we have three new DAC members, thank you, everyone.
Pending.
Pending background, successful background check. All right, that brings us to nine dot seven, special policy updates, exhibits and regulations. Double motion to approve nine dot seven.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs, that's a second. Mr. Swayze, all right, so this is what I thought nine dot three was earlier. So when they did all the special policy updates that we talked about in eight dot two. Whenever they changed regulations or exhibit regulations or exhibits only one read, so these are all the same kind of changes we talked about during eight dot two. Uh uh gender, anti-discrimination, um. I forget the other two things we talked about, but all those same things, but just for exhibits and regulations.
Which only need one.
Which only, which is why these are. It's gonna be weird, though, not that, you might have a regulation that's incongruent with its policy. But only from.
Right. It's, it's, it's a lawful law.
I think maybe in the future when we do something like that, we'll go first read policy and then we'll do second read. And then only read of exhibit regulations, if that makes sense. Let's do that in the future. Um any, any questions, comments, concerns, discuss? All right, call for the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Ricks?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Now things are gonna slow down. I think this is where the meeting's gonna get long. So um we have two proposals. And so um. We, when, when someone, whomever makes the motion, um they have to state in their motion. Which proposal they would prefer. Right, and then we have a second, we discuss and then we vote on it. Um so there's two proposals, there's Will Dan, right? And there's Iconogy. So, do I have a motion to approve?
Wait, 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 which one was first in our group?
Will Dan.
Um Iconogy is the first.
Oh, were they?
Yes, Will Dan was last.
Iconogy talked about uh.
It was the two young.
The energy and.
Potentially making it uh more formal because it would invoke that energy clause.
That was Iconogy. And then Will Dan.
Said that they like to find outside the box ideas, right?
No, outside the box was Iconogy. That was Iconogy.
You guys are killing me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I thought it was the other way around, he in the secret box, the thing he goes.
What'd you say, Paul?
No, I thought it was the other way around. I thought it was the uh second guy that uh running the energy and was willing to take on more risk financially on their end.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Cause I, I.
Yeah, well, I know both Carl.
The older gentleman, Will Dan was the older gentleman who went towards the end. Iconogy was the two younger ones, the one that brought the architect as well as the one with the company and they went first.
The one who brought the lady who didn't speak?
No, no, I'm talking about the two gentlemen.
There were three guys and one presentation. And then there was.
A guy and a lady and then a girl.
The guy and the lady.
Was Will.
Was Iconogy.
Who was the? Now I'm gonna have to go back.
You had the one guy who was, who was the rep. The owner's rep. Then you had uh.
He was last.
The guy and the lady was Iconogy. Will Dan was the two gentleman, because he had, he was his, his business that he, he had from his dad. And he was working with the architect out of.
How do you remember it, Paul? Cause I feel like.
Okay, I remember Iconogy being last because they're a member.
Where's Will?
Um, oh great, I pressed a button. Didn't mean to press a button. Will Dan is angle with.
So a simple question, uh the, the elderly, or the elderly, the older gentleman of the group. Was from. That was Iconogy, wasn't it?
That was Iconogy, correct.
Okay.
He, he had the female assistant. But he did all the.
Yeah, they were the ones that did speak about uh going to take on more. Right, and that they were willing to take on more of a uh financial burden.
I, I think both Will Dan and Iconogy agreed with that.
I'm looking through the Iconogy folder and it talks about the E P C program.
That's the energy.
Energy program.
Yep, yep, okay.
Okay, so now that that's been sorted, do I have a motion to pick a P H E expansion design build proposal?
I'll make a motion to uh accept the Iconogy proposal.
All right, uh for those that didn't hear, the motion was to accept the Iconogy proposal. That's second.
Second.
All right. I think we've pretty much already discussed everything we wanted to discuss. Um so both of these proposals are basically no cost upfront.
No cost upfront, probably, and hopefully they're gonna have a, it is to get the best grant that adds some additional monies. That they can roll into a larger study.
Right. And both proposals are to create a master plan.
Yes.
And shepherd us through um funding.
A series of phases of.
Yeah.
What will be urgently first.
The, the difference, as we briefly discussed earlier, is that these, this particular better. Uh proposer, if you will, um. Thanks to take a load of the overall cost of the project to us by utilizing E P C program. Um endorsement program. All right, I think we've been over this a hundred times. Is there anything else that anybody wants to add? Or, or again, Iconogy. Mrs. Combs, you happy? Are you sure you're still looking?
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at the confidence.
Okay, so then obviously in both of these, to be, to be fair, there's also a. If we decide to stop pursuing the process for whatever reason there is and make it worth our wild costs and you.
It's a walkaway clause. If, if they get you through the grant, through the best grant process. And you're awarded the process and you say, you know what, never mind, they're gonna want their walkaway. If you go through with it.
Right, right, it's, it's all. All right. Anything else? Chuck, how you feeling about all this?
I'm listening. I didn't ask you if you listened, I'm gonna ask you how you felt about this. I mean, you're essentially gonna be the die, right? I mean, I, I'm with the Icony and. To me, I'm gonna do it best for the school, the district. And that's how I'll work it.
Yeah, I mean that.
Mark, you got any idea on this?
No, I, my traits, my traits has been as a outside observer. No, I, my experience, my experience has been as a outside observer, as a, as an administrator, watching Will Dan through complete large projects, so I'm more familiar with Will Dan. Um, I think, listening to the proposals, as I was here that evening, um, this group, again, brings something that others didn't, and I think that's where small school districts, really shine, that we have opportunities and we take advantage of those opportunities that aren't provided for other districts, uh, so this group coming in, I fully agree that, um, this is the way to go, thank you for asking.
Awesome, thank you. Or anyone else, anything else? You good? Everybody good? Alright, call for the vote please ma'am.
Combs, I, Ricks.
I.
Swayze.
I.
On, motion carries, you were dealing with Iconergy, if you will, do you do diligence there, Mr. Superintendent, notify?
Okay.
Uh, both parties, if you want.
Am I the one that signs that? Yes, I am.
Um, I was about to say, Mr. Ricks, I see you getting ready to go to work, glad you made it this long, um.
I will sign that and let them know.
Awesome, thanks sir. Alright, that brings us to nine dot nine, boardroom audio visual system request for proposal, so a motion approved, nine dot nine. Make a motion approved nine dot nine, thanks sir, do I have a second? Alright, so as we discussed, um, we, we got a, we had an idea, we got a quote from a single vendor, um, there were some concerns raised, so we decided we were gonna go through the formal RFP process, um, so one day I sat down and wrote an RFP, and gave it to superintendent and a business manager who threw darts at it and bled it over a little bit, um, and just because we vote to approve this RFP and actually we posted, at the end of the day, we don't have to accept a proposal, and we, we don't have to spend the money, whatever that money ends up being based on, the process that we're about. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
No, I thought the RFP was really good, I thought it was solid.
Well, it's still, it's changed the names, protect the innocent.
Well, I think the word for native is, uh, bloody or, yeah, it's very good.
Caught three spelling errors.
That was, that was, that was top.
And an omission, and an omission, yeah.
There you go.
And we do have a place to publish it.
We do, and if you saw the, or you didn't see the original cover page, they actually posted in the newspaper too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think we should probably be done. Thoughts, I mean, don't you think?
I'm, I'll also send it to the guy.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he deserves to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Who the one that you already got?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so anything else on the RFP?
Yeah, this is a sealed bid, proposal where the board's gonna open that up.
In the bid, so if you.
At the next board.
Yeah, did we put the RFP proper in the packet, in the public packet? We did, okay, so, um, not spilling any beans by saying, so, um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have, and forgive me if I get the dates wrong, but so once, if we approve it tonight, I'll have a week or two until, um, it's posted, and then we'll have a period for potential bidders to ask some questions, and then, um, their bids will be due, didn't I say December first?
Could be.
Yeah, cause they kinda started, you know, it's gonna have a special, um.
You said December first, no later.
Yeah, so the bids will come in sealed, three P M. December first, and then we'll open and read them at that special, so now we have another reason that's special on December.
Yeah, so they'll be publicly open and better out.
Yeah. So that's kind of sort of timeframe, and then hopefully, if things work out right, just maybe, remember, there are supply chain problems, so let's not get our hopes up, but I already have, I'm hoping January board meeting, we actually have the system. If, you know, the board votes to spend the money on. If supply chain doesn't case in the butt, and we actually do award, give our notice of intent to award, what do we say, that's the week of Christmas, and then authorization to proceed, uh, first Monday, first Monday, January. If we don't have any supply chain issues.
I mean, you're, just not only are you looking at supply chain issues, a lot of companies are backfilling, and I mean, can't even get to customers.
Oh, that's something we should have asked them, we can do the work. Voters. Alright, yeah, it is what it is, unless we wanna put, put this off even longer.
Well, just to make you wait a little longer, it might be.
Okay, so you guys do understand that, but.
Yeah, no, we do.
I get griefed that we don't have a system.
You know what I understand, I'm so glad that Danielle finally got to work and started giving me grief, I'm getting tired of being the only one.
I had to pick up some slack. People are gone.
Alright, are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah, call for the vote please ma'am.
Combs, I. Um.
Mr. Ricks is absent.
Ricks is absent with, uh, no, it's Swayze.
I.
And Underwood.
I, motion carries, we're opposed to RFP. Brings us to nine dot ten, bullying prevention grant, a motion approved nine dot ten.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze, Mr. Superintendent, sir?
Uh, we have the opportunity to apply for an, an, uh, anti-bullying grant, uh, it aligns very well with one of the policies that we just approved. Um, it, it gives us funding for three years, it's in conjunction with G S N., who we have our S C L. grant with, and our family advocate grant with, and, um, we just need the board to approve, all, all you guys are voting on is, um, the assurances page, which is standard with every grant that says, we're gonna spend the money away, uh, you give us the money, uh, what we say, if we will, and we're not gonna supplant, uh, funding. So, uh, it's a standard, I, I haven't actually seen the grant yet, the grant's coming, I should get it in the next couple of weeks, but they would like this assurances page sent with the grant, and it's due here in the next week or two. Appreciate forward?
Oh, that's, what is that? How you?
It has two screens, so that way you can pick it up, and then you have two functional screens, like, I'm reading this, but if I needed to make notes down here.
See how easily you distracted?
It's an L G.
Back to the cases, ma'am.
Back to notes, L G. See, alright. Call for the vote please ma'am.
Combs, I. Swayze.
I.
And Underwood.
Alright, motion carries, it brings us to nine dot eleven, thanks, BOSI's contract, a motion approved nine dot eleven.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs, Mr. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Um, I don't know what to say here, I'm not a fan, um, really thought we did this earlier in the year, I couldn't find it, superintendent has assured me that, um, we have not done it prior, um, and also the dollar value is not what we budgeted, um.
I thought we beat this dead, Dwight was here too, I know what, I can't, I mean, I didn't have a lot of time to look, but, um,
um, maybe we did, and.
So this money is not budgeted?
A hundred forty, hundred twenty was budgeted.
Hundred twenty-three.
One twenty-three was budgeted.
So it went up, it was the actual cost was higher than what we.
Well, but there are estimates going up.
Yeah.
Um, if you remember, at the end of the year, we always get some money back on this.
We get our high cost funds that we applied for, um, and, and it runs a year in arrears, is the way that works, so, you know, come in as revenue to ops, revenue or an offset.
No, it's revenue.
So, it'll be additional.
Does it mess up our virtual level, I mean, of course it does, but I mean, when it's all said and done.
We, we can resolve it.
Okay.
It does, it is higher.
Yeah.
Um, but it looks like it's way higher than it really is, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Plus, we have the credit.
Right, that's what I'm telling, is the credit, if you look at that number, it's like, oh, nevermind, credit, but if you take the credit out, and it's still higher than there is.
And I mean, if we partner with BOSI, there's no way to, I mean, we could say no, and then what, we just are opt out of BOSI's, correct?
Yeah, you, you cannot opt out of BOSI's.
Well, we can opt out of getting, getting big, getting services from them this week.
Not special ed. service, no, that, that's a.
Why do we know?
They're, they're, Crowley County's been trying to get out of South Central for years, they've taken it to court, and it's.
By having my own special ed. staff, I do not have to go to BOSI's.
You have to be able to prove legally that you can comply, which.
Sure.
Financially, I don't know.
Well, right, you'd have to have a full-time speed, full-time, yes, and of course, we can't hoard the higher full-time.
That, that's where.
Oh, I know. But.
It's only your big district.
But we still could vote no.
You could.
That's what I'm saying, just so people know, that this is an option, is to opt out, however, the repercussions would be.
Oh, yeah.
So that way, they don't feel like closing this, you know, it's like.
Right, don't forget I T.
For public purposes.
Hire our own I T. guy. Yeah. Right.
We can say no, we can always say no.
For those of you who walked to meet the candidate.
If you have enough money.
I know, right? Alright, any further discussion?
No, I'm just glad that we got the cost, and that we are able to afford on, um, without.
And we'll get some of that back.
And that's thanks to you, Matt, for making it through.
Um, call for the vote please ma'am.
Combs, I, Swayze.
I.
Underwood.
Me.
You didn't like it.
Yep.
You know what? No, no, no.
Yeah, you should have, you should have.
I'm, I'm gonna get you.
Ed wanted to be named, because he doesn't wanna be stuck with these BOSIs.
The motion carries.
Not just that, I think BOSI's is too expensive.
I agree.
I do, I've always.
Honestly, if you look at.
I agree, that's why I had to go with the route of, well, if we could said no, this is what we would be looking at.
It's a lot of, we.
It's a necessary equal, unfortunately.
We would spend more than this.
It's a necessary, for especially for smaller districts, this stuff.
That's where, that's where you, you get stuck, because we're so small and can't afford to pay.
Right.
The salaries of all of people.
Right. Alright, that brings us to ten dot O. information updates. Mrs. Combs, since it's your favorite.
I will, um, Ms. Jody, I'm glad you were awarded those spots that you had, were hoping for, our fingers are crossed from your update.
Yes.
Yes, I'm overeaten, but very happy, yes.
I'm just glad for all the updates, Chuck, thanks for the update, thanks for the update on the bus barn, um, I know that there were some things on your wish list there that we need to look into. And I just wanna say thanks for racking it out and getting those updates to us, and keeping them so detailed, so that way we know what's going on.
Yeah. As always, I, uh, to, um, verbalize my appreciation for the updates. Just so that, give you a other update, though, the fencing for the bus yard has been completed today, our fence is fixed only around the bus yard, we no longer have any gaps, leaning fences, well, not any situations that can rise again. That was, that was completed today. Awesome.
Thank you.
Any other updates to the updates? Alright, done, you win, you win, okay, awesome. Oh, boy. Alright, that brings us to love not a executive session, I make a motion to move into executive session, for one, to discuss security details in accordance with C R S. twenty-four six four oh two four D, and also to discuss personnel matters, give feedback to the superintendent on his performance in accordance with C R S. twenty-four six four oh two four F, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote please ma'am? Yes.
Combs, I, Swayze.
I.
Underwood.
I, motion carries, we are going to move into executive session, we will be back, hopefully shortly. And, um, oh, and the time is seven thirty-nine P M. I gotta do that for the minutes, sorry.
I was thinking the same thing, I was like.
I thought that was streamlined.
Oh, wait till your executive session, buddy.
You said pretty quick. Yeah. I'm still waiting for that resolution.
Which one?
Co-op, yeah, the co-op.
Um, so we're still, like, we were so, the backstory to that is the reason we made it last is because, um, we're waiting to see if Edison passes it.
Oh, when's that?
That should be taken now.
Oh, that's crazy, okay.
That's why we made it last.
Okay.
Cause we're sure she's not gonna pass it if they don't pass it.
Well.
Thanks for reminding me.
How do you land it, would you like to see it?
I guess I would, yeah.
Oh, I don't think anybody's supposed to.
I think any, anytime you can keep kiddos in athletics and, yeah.
Well, that's not true, there is a few.
Back to the nineties.
There is a few, but. It's not the school board, it's not the school board over at Edison, but there is a few that oppose it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've been talking to a lot of them over there.
You talk to a lot, is it just because of personal feelings over why they want to stay together?
Because she is.
How do they get pizza?
She thinks everybody else, but you got, come with me, young lady.
Forget your points. Yeah, she's all over here, in about three years, we'll know.
Oh, boy.
Here, and, and, so I kinda wanted to know what you felt. I never got with any of them, yeah, um, Will Dan's a good group, I mean, they've done a lot, but I'll tell you, their strong point is not age. Really? I don't know. No, we, uh, I know, after two or three different chillers and whatever.
Yeah.
They still can't figure out, see, we need to stay on that stuff, so that it don't fall and crack somewhere, any of that. All that in a bag of chips is, you know, folks. A little young folks, what, no, that.
Like, hmm, I think they're considered the older, younger, older, no, older, younger. No, it's just that.
Not about older, younger.
It's strange, yeah. Just to be like grimace. I was like grimacing, he's talking that word, I was like, literally nineties, yeah, during nineties area, okay. I'm coming bottom. We gotta just, bless his heart. Well, I think I'm gonna head home, are you going, okay, alright, have a good night, be safe.
We do have some.
Yeah, we. Totally send that off.
Whoever you didn't, I didn't know, hey. Contact you every month.
Yeah.
I think I'm, the community dance, it, it, I grew up in a small town, this is very similar to this district, we weren't spaced out, but, um, no, we weren't far, but, uh, what, we're twenty miles away from here, um, so we were fifteen from the two schools, so.
Close.
Yeah.
Similar situation, they, they called them Highland. So it was every quarter, there was a Highland. So it was every quarter, there was a hymn, and it was at each of the rotating schools, the high school, junior high, the high school, and you just.
Yeah.
Rotated around, maybe, there was always a dinner, there was live music from the community, there was always somebody who came in, volunteered, and just. It it were our community.
It it's it's simple, it's simple to do, you know, represent a little bit more. To do, you know, the practice. So, to do it, and then say no, but. And very young, cool music.
Yeah, the chili cook-off my first year here was interesting. I volunteered to cook the chili this year. Right. Okay.
On transportation coordinator, then transportation maintenance facility. And then, I mean. Four months of freshman. So we're pretty accurate, so I still want to be in term. I would, but it just been.
Yeah.
Over and off.
Yeah. Hey. Let's see what it's. Hello?
You may.
Sorry, it's live. That's fine.
You can buy your food. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you. You will cook that was bad. Oh, thank you.[1.29]
I don't think ours.
No.
Oh, that's part of the attachment that was there. All right. Uh, we have reconvened from executive session at eight forty two P M on um October twenty 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 one. Um. All members that were present before we adjourned to executive session are present uh at our re-adjournment. Brings us to other business twelve dot one G A S P arm staff. Um, you have a motion to approve G A S P.
Make motion to prove D A S P. Arm staff.
I I want to approve G S A P. With the with adding, I want to make a motion to modify G A S P to include the candidates selected are to be, they will also be aware of who is also selected.
That works. Do have a second.
Some of that sounds good.
All right. Um, so what we realize is that um.
Is there a second?
Yeah, he's second. Um. Is that if you're carrying the school, you need to know everyone else that's carrying the school and that's what the modified motion is for. Um, any other discussion on arm staff before we uh vote for the vote? Unpleased with the changes.
Thanks for working on it. All right, ready to vote?
Call the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Swayze.
Aye.
And then.
Aye, motion carries, G A S P is present. Brings us to twelve dot two resolution. Brings us to twelve dot two resolution on basketball co-op with Edison School District. Do you have a motion approved twelve dot two?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Um, so we've just received word that the Edison School Board has approved their resolution. Now, there are some details that have to be hammered out between supers and A Ds and Chassa and all that fun stuff. Um, and this resolution does not address any of those details. We're going to leave that up to those individuals.
Except for it's a two-year contract.
That's the end of the resolution.
That, that is a Chassa.
That's a Chassa rule.
That's a Chassa rule. Um, I, I do want to make it clear to the board that this is for both boys and girls basketball ball. Um, they, they'd asked for boys. I, I wanted to due to title line concerns, you always want to make sure you include boys and girls. And so when we don't have any girls, I said, well, if you get some girls that want to, that's fine. They can come. Right. They would also like to host a game or two.
Those are details you can get back and forth.
So I, I think it would be good to get some community spirit for both schools.
Uh, yes, I just.
No, I'm, I'm excited. I think it's good for their kids. I think it's good for our kids.
I just had a quick question. Um, it says that. So that it is expected that students from both schools use district provided transportation. So is Edison going to be responsible for transporting their kids to?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
So they're not going to transport here and then we transport them all? Okay.
Well, that's fine. They're responsible for getting their kids where they need to be. They're transporting their kids to the event. That's fine. If the coach wants them here, they're responsible for transporting the kids here and then they ride our bus. And I can understand that's a coach. Yes, and to and from.
But what'll probably happen if we're playing Miami Yoder or we're playing Callahan, we're going to go to Edison, pick them up and go.
And that's fine.
I expect that. Okay. That's how the coaches all work. If we're going that way, we stop at P B I R. Why would we not afford that for them? It's on our way.
Once again, these are all details that's hashed out. But superintendents, A Ds, coaches and Chassa.
And I'm sure they will. And games over there, families over here would love that because most of us know they love it.
Okay, good to know.
They said that all the home games will be here. However, they have offered to have them there for community support and relations.
Yes.
So they offer the hopes, but they are under the expectation of them. And that's, and I'm reading from their resolution.
Thank you. And, and that was a conversation I had with, with, uh, with Mr. Franks. And, um, he said, we would, we just want to make the offer because we think we would, we would love to be a part of it as a community. So we'll work out, we'll work that out. I appreciate your, your input.
They've got an awesome view.
And, and I've spoken with, uh, I've spoken with our A D about that. He said, that would be great. You know, it would be great for them to be able to do that. So I, I don't think there's going to be any, any big questions and I expect both. I expect both superintendents to defer to the building principles and the A Ds to get it, get her done.
Then good.
Hey, hey.
Okay, um, so now that I see my typo, I want to amend the resolutions um, to strike the first instance of the word take in the actual resolution after now therefore be resolved. That's a type crap error in my heart. Oh, that's.
Oh, shall take coordinate.
Yeah. Should read shall coordinate all the details and take the necessary actions too. Um, so strike first take. So do I have a second for that? Strike, please.
One second.
Thank you. Um, any other discussions on this?
No, we have to read the resolution.
It's in the packet, but for the record, I'll read it. Resolutional Board of Education and Heather School District twenty regarding the basketball co-op with Edison School District. Whereas Edison School District has requested be a resolution to co-op with the Heather School District for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school years in basketball. And whereas the Heather School District supports cooperating with neighboring school districts in supporting their athletic programs. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education and Heather School District twenty-eight that the superintendent shall coordinate the relevant tasks and take the next necessary actions to work with Edison School District and Chassa to secure a co-op arrangement for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three basketball season. Anything else?
Okay, I get it.
Call the vote, please, ma'am.
Combs, aye. Swayze.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye, motion carries. Brings us to thirteen adjournment. Do you have a motion?
Which, which, which motion? Don't you have to, it'll be amended motion.
Okay. Mr. Smith, one B.
I thought that was amended one.
No.
I thought it was.
All right. So let's, let's vote to amend the motion. Um, couple of please, ma'am.
Let's vote to amend the motion. Combs, aye. Swayze.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye. The motion is amended. Now let's vote to approve the amended motion.
Let's vote to approve the amended motion. And yeah, I mean, Combs, aye. Swayze.
Aye. Underwood, aye. Resolution's approved. Um, that brings thirteen. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, I mean motion.
I make motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose for nay. Say nay. Motion's approved. We are adjourned at eight fifty P M.
Thank you, Lori.
For keeping us straight, Lori.
Kyle.
Actually, we're ready.
These are for you, ma'am.
Shortest.
Did you put in my right?
It was pretty good. I looked dressed.
Isn't it?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks for the pizza for my birthday.
Yeah, thanks for the pizza.
Today's your birthday?
I, I became.